All right, um, we're gonna start a couple of minutes early with a welcome to everybody. Thank you for being here on the work session of Monday, April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Um, we're gonna begin with a pledge of allegiance. If you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I wanna wait a minute on, um, official business, just because people might join right at four o'clock online. Um, so I'm gonna start with one proclamation. Um, I'm not gonna read this in this evening, uh, but I do wanna acknowledge, um, that, uh, May twenty twenty five is, um, building safety month. Uh, for those of us, uh, who work in the construction field, um, certainly, uh, for, uh, people who, uh, who have, uh, in our town, um, to deal with, uh, with construction and with development, and with, um, code, uh, it's important to recognize this month. I wanna just, uh, read this. Whereas our, uh, town of Amherst is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential roles of our, of our homes, buildings, infrastructure, play, both in everyday life and in disaster, when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in construction industry, who work year round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a not-for-profit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials, who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about our critical role of our communities' largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us sustainable and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, the game on, the theme for the Building Safety Month in twenty twenty five encourages us to raise awareness of bill, about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Brian Culpa, Supervisor to the Town of Amherst, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty five as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our residents and citizens to join as we participate in this month of safety activities. And with that, we have a second proclamation. Thank you, Tom and Mark. Very good. Um. All right, and with that, um, Mark's sitting there like rolling his eyes at me. I, yeah, I'm, I'm very happy to, 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 to acknowledge our work and the work of the International Code Council. Anyways.
Okay.
With that, Sean?
Thank you, Supervisor. I just wanna take a minute to recognize, um, Fred and Anthony Sumato. Uh, in this proclamation, they've been incredibly generous to the town of Amherst, donating a parcel at seventy-five Cupolo. Uh, that parcel is in a subdivision that we're gonna work to create a playground for, uh, with generous funds, uh, committed from State Senator Ryan, uh, and the town of Amherst. So I'm gonna read this proclamation for the record, but I wanna make sure I express the gratitude those guys deserve, uh, for this donation. Whereas the town of Amherst is committed to fostering strong partnerships with residents and local leaders who demonstrate a deep dedication to the well-being and growth of our community. And whereas Fred and Anthony Sumato have generously donated a parcel of property located at seventy-five Cupolo in the Evergreen neighborhood into the town of Amherst. Whereas this remarkable act of generosity reflects their enduring commitment to the future of Amherst and the enhancement of recreational and communal spaces within our neighborhoods. Whereas the donated parcel will be transformed into a new public playground, bringing joy and enrichment to countless families and children for generations to come. Whereas such a meaningful contribution is a shining example of civic-minded leadership and partnership that continues to shape the town of Amherst in positive and lasting ways. Now therefore be resolved that the town of, the town, Amherst Town Board extends its deepest gratitude and recognition to Fred and Anthony Sumato for their selfless donation and their steadfast support of our community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be presented to Fred and Anthony Sumato as a token of appreciation for their invaluable contribution to the town of Amherst and its residents. Thank you.
All right, we thank the Sumatos, appreciate that. Okay, um, the next item we have is the Town, uh, Board Meeting Agenda Items. And then after that, we do have an executive session to discuss potential litigation on a matter and a possible land acquisition. Land acquisition is actually, uh, two parts. Um, one of it is, uh, is a project that we've already been working on, Mere Woods. Um, the, the second one, uh, has to do with, uh, with an opportunity the town, um, is looking at. Hopefully, if, if things continue, talk about that more in weeks to come. Um, but we, um, we have our Town Board items and potential consent agenda, um, that I wanna reach, uh, and talk about first. So, um, we are gonna have, uh, a couple people, um, in our, um, memoriam today. Uh, Lieutenant John, um, uh, Renbach, uh, who, who actually died during a call, um, in, uh, when cardiac arrest during a call at East Amherst Fire Department. It's tough, the, the fire departments are tight-knit, communities, uh, calls are, are stressful times even for well-practiced departments. So, uh, certainly our, our, our heartfelt, um, sympathies go out to his family and to the members of the department. And then, uh, Mark Bosch, who's a retired Amherst Highway Department employee. Um, so, um, we'll talk about those a little bit later on. Uh, we have a couple of public hearings this evening. The first is, uh, parking restriction on Steinway Court, Maple Road. Uh, is Chris coming in for that? The second is Homecrest Drive and Hillcrest Drive Always Stop. Again, Chris. Uh, Resolution four oh four is a local law to amend Chapter one seventy-five of the Town of Amherst Taxation on ADU exemption, and that is Lori. Okay. Four twenty-one, what?
P.
P.
I have it.
All right, thanks, okay. As long as the Clerk's Office has that, though. Okay. Resolution, uh, four oh five is the alienation of a portion of twelve sixty-five Smith Road. Who's presenting?
No, I think Dan's gonna run it. It's how we decided.
All right, perfect. That has to do with the cell tower. Resolution four oh six is a secret determination for nineteen, for sixteen ninety-two Maple. Are there any questions on that item going into the evening? A resolution. Three forty-three, we, what? Not for the seeker.
Didn't change, but just a second.
Yeah, the actual implementation, yeah. So on three forty-three, Resolution three forty-three is the adoption of a local law to amend the zoning map at sixteen ninety-two Maple, C twenty twenty-four oh four. That's the one that we have a revised resolution. Is there any questions about it? So, so my intent is gonna be, I mean, so we usually don't vote on land use items, uh, the first evening of the public hearing. But if there's not an overall concern by this board, if the board decides after public hearing to move ahead on the alienation, are we able to do that this evening based on the resolution in front of us? Right. To take the action. Okay. So we're just, we're just simply closing it. Is the, is the only action?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, on, uh, our resolutions, and again, the, uh, potential consent agenda, um, Deputy Supervisor Lavigne, you have, uh, four oh seven, the red alerts up, red alert upgrades. Uh, are there any questions about the, uh, modification to the red alert system to expand eighty, uh, in the pre-planning of buildings? Any reason to withhold that from consent? Yeah. So, should we add any?
From the avoidable alarm fund.
Yeah, but it would still need a CRS, uh, so. Okay, so we're okay with this as is? Yeah. Got it, thank you. All right, any reason not to put it on to the consent? Resolution four oh eight is the Blaisstack Fire Investigation Software Contract. Any questions regarding the contract? Any reason to withhold that from consent? Councilmembers of Cali, you've got the Resolution four oh nine, set a public hearing date for parking restriction on the dead end of Sierra. Any reason not to do that via consent? Okay. Resolution four ten is the license agreement for one fifty-four San Fernando Lane for Puzo. Any questions regarding the license agreement? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four eleven is a new firefighter for Main Transit Fire Department. Any reason to withhold that appointment via consent from consent? Resolution four twelve is a appointment for the Swarmville Fire Company. Any reason to withhold that appointment from consent? The next item is the Admin's GovTech Software CRS fifty-four forty. Any questions about the software contract? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fourteen is a fire extinguisher inspection repair CRS fifty-four thirty-two. Any questions regarding that contract? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fifteen is parking lot paving for town-owned lots. Any questions regarding that, um, award? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four sixteen is a change order for highway garage heaters. Any questions regarding the change order?
I'll call that a Scribner's error.
Five four seven four. Okay, with that Scribner's error adjustment, any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four seventeen are budget transfers and amendments. Any questions about those? Any reason to withhold them from consent? Resolution four eighteen is an extension of the townwide collision contracts, CRS fifty-four sixteen, fifty-four seventeen, and fifty-four eighteen. Any questions regarding those contracts? Any reason to withhold them from consent? Resolution four nineteen is an award to bid two zero two five zero one one, tax bill processing, CRS fifty-four thirty-one. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty is an award, uh, an award RFP two zero two five zero three, utility audit services, CRS fifty-four seventy-three. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty-one is an award to bid two zero two five zero one six, building department vehicles, CRS fifty-four seventy-two. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty-two is the Amherst Court employees to attend Drug Court Conference. Any questions regarding the conference? Any reason to withhold that from consent? Resolution four twenty-three is an authorization to install one fire hydrant at six sixty-nine Youngs Road, S P twenty twenty-four dash zero four, Town of Amherst Project Number two zero one zero dot zero eight three A. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty-four is the Evergreen Terrace Subdivision. Street lighting, energy costs, Town of Amherst Job Number two zero one six dot zero five four A. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty-five is the National Grid Power Corporation Electric Service Proposal and Grant of Easement Paradise Park Restroom Building, Town of Amherst Project two zero one five dot zero two four A, CRS ID fifty-four oh three. Any questions regarding the, the granting of the easement? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty-six is the proposal for design service and for Maple Road. C R one nine, C R, it should be CRS one ninety-two. And North Bailey Avenue Intersection Reconfiguration, CNS Engineers Incorporated, P I N fifty-seven sixty-five dot twenty-three. New York State Comptroller's Contract D zero four one five five six, Town of Amherst Job Number two zero two two dot zero one six A, CRS ID fifty-four sixty-one. Is that, should have been CR, I was wrong, not CRS one ninety-two. Um. Any questions regarding the proposal for design services for that intersection? And this is related to a raised grant which we received in tandem with the county. Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty-seven is an award to bid for the Peyton Barlow Company Incorporated, General Contract for Paradise Park Restroom Building, Town of Amherst Project Number two zero one five dot zero two four A. Any questions regarding that award to bid? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty-eight is a maintenance materials bid. Any questions regarding the bid? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four twenty-nine is the highway work permit ECWA sixty-eight Glen Meadows Drive South. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four thirty is a highway work permit for ECWA for eighty-four Fairwood Drive. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four thirty-one is appointment of a recreation attendant, part-time youth in recreation. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four thirty-two is a leave of absence without pay for the police department. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold that from consent? Resolution four thirty-three is a recreation attendant, part-time youth in recreation. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four thirty-four is extended sick leave of absence without pay for youth in recreation. Any questions regarding that resolution? Any reason to withhold that from consent? Resolution four thirty-five is Deputy Town Clerk from Town Clerk's Office. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four thirty-six is the po, police officer for the police department. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold that from consent? Resolution four thirty-seven is the maintenance worker for the engineering plant sixteen. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four thirty-eight is clerk part-time for the planning department. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four thirty-nine is request to use trust and agency funds, account number T four zero one one ten four zero zero two. Any questions regarding that resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four forty is the piggyback through P E P P M with View Sonic Corporation, CRS fifty-four oh seven. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four forty-one is a piggyback through, through P P, P E P P M with Trifera LLC, CRS fifty-four forty-one. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four forty-two is an update computer with, in mobile device usage policy for twenty twenty-five, volume one. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four forty-three is a Microsoft three sixty-five pilot implementation agreement, CRS fifty-four sixty-six. Any questions regarding that resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four forty-four, uh, is the town acceptance of the Main Street Corridor Study. Any questions regarding that acceptance? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four forty-five is to authorize the supervisor to request an exception to a conflict of interest from the HUD Buffalo Field Office for an employee working with the Community Development Program. Any questions regarding that request?
I have one question. Could your request be more general in nature, not just for the specific employee for the planning department, but just in the future? I don't know if this employee is being held up in trying to get a home because they're waiting on this, but I know that the other employee wasn't in this department. It didn't super matter.
Yeah, we, we actually, we had three employees originally. Um, one was in highway and two were in planning. And then the, so there's only one in planning that wants to move forward. Um, but they do work directly on the community development program. They don't work on this particular, they only answer some high-level questions on the program. They don't have any decision-making role for the first-time homebuyer program. But yes, their name has come up where they're, from the waiting list. So once they're up, they have a certain time period by which they can seek a home, um, but has to be reviewed. And then one of the other things I wanna point out is that we're, we've decided to work with the town of Tonawanda and have them independently review the approval of this, um, of this, um, staffer if, if the board approves requesting the exception.
Yeah, and I believe the language allows the supervisor to submit the letter. Perhaps that letter could be written more generally, like, so that if there are future people who come above the list. I don't know if it's just this one person and there's not anybody else who's gonna apply to.
I think it should be a case by case.
HUD, we actually went back and forth with HUD several times, and it's technically a case by case with this particular person. But in, in, in general, they ruled the other two, we had a decision made on the other employees because they do not work directly on community development programming. We don't have to seek approvals for the, for future staff.
I just know it's very hard to buy a house in Amherst. I really wanna encourage people to do so, so if we can speed up the process, but I, but I thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Any issues with, okay, all right. So they'll put that on consent then. Resolution four forty-six is temporary access agreement for use of the police department, community policing, and training facility for the United States Naval SEAL Cadet Corps. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? I'm glad to see the building getting more and more use. Um, Resolution four forty-seven is a memorandum of understanding for emergency vet services for seized animals, VCA Blue Cross, uh, Animal Hospital of Amherst, CRS uh, fifty-four thirty-three. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four forty-eight is travel and training requests for explosives breaching training course. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold that from consent? I'm glad that course isn't offered here. Resolution four forty-nine is G and G Fitness Purchase of Equipment, uh, Gym Equipment, CRS fifty-four thirty-five. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fifty is a travel request, required operator training courses for sewer treatment plant. Any questions regarding the travel request? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fifty-one is a contract extension for bid two zero two three zero one eight Boiler and Wa, and Cooling Water Treatment Services, MIS of America Incorporated, CRS Number fifty-four sixty-two. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold that from consent? Resolution four fifty-two is a change order number one, final increase of five thousand two hundred to C I R Electric, W P C F Building thirteen UPS System, Town of Amherst Project Number two zero two three dot zero zero two A, CRS fifty-four sixty-four. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fifty-three is a change order number two, increase of seventy-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine and time extension for Progressive Roofing Incorporated, W P C F Roof System Improvements in the Town of Amherst Project Number two zero one six dot zero zero two B, CRS fifty-four sixty-three. Uh, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fifty-four is an Erie County Piggyback Kenyon Pipeline Inspection LLC, cured-in-place pipelining services, CRS Number four fifty-four thirty-seven. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fifty-five is a contract extension for CRS fifty-four thirty-nine. Any questions regarding the contract extension? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fifty-six is a travel authorization. Any questions regarding that, travel authorization for the USAH Annual Congress? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution four fifty-seven is a rental agreement, W N Y R H L, CRS fifty-four seventy-five, Western New York Roller Hockey League. Any questions regarding the rental agreement? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Communication thirty-six, a request for a public hearing for three twenty thirty, or thirty-two thirty, uh, thirty-two thirty-eight Millersport Highway. Uh, recommend we grant that request for May twenty-seventh. Any reason not to do that via consent? Communication thirty-seven is the A A U W Buffalo Branch Request for a Fee Waiver. Uh, recommend we grant that fee waiver as requested. Any reason not to do that via consent? Communication thirty-eight's correspondence from Shawn Hopkins Esquire regarding sixteen ninety-two Maple Road rezoning. And, uh, I would, um, recommend we receive this, refer to the Planning Department and Town Attorney.
I believe most of the concerns in this letter were addressed with the amended rezo that we have already today.
Yes, but we still need to refer the letter because it belongs in the files.
Yep, okay, so we'll ref, recommend we create that referral. Uh, any reason not to do that via consent? Communication thirty-nine is correspondence from Shawn Hopkins Esquire for forty-two to fifty Dodge Road. Any questions regarding the communication? Again, I recommend we receive this and refer it to, um, Town Planning Department.
And Engineering.
Engineering Department and to the Town Attorney. Anybody else? Uh, any reason not to do that via consent? Communication forty, correspondence from Shawn Hopkins Esquire regarding forty-seven eighty Sheridan Drive. Um, again, on this one, I would recommend we receive this, refer to the Town Planning Department, Town Engineering Department, and Town Attorney. Any reason not to do that via consent? Communication forty-one is a notice to claim for Cheryl Lessen, yeah, versus Town of Amherst. Uh, recommend we receive this, refer to the Town Attorney. Communication twenty twenty-five forty-two, Zaylina Iloa versus Town of Amherst, a notice to claim. I recommend we receive this, refer to the Town Attorney. Any reason not to do that via consent? Communication forty-three is summons a complaint, National Mortgage LLC versus Town of Amherst at all. I recommend we receive this, refer to the Town Attorney. Any reason not to do that via consent? Communication forty-four is summons a complaint for Richard S. Cato and Nicholas M. Scioli versus Town of Amherst. I recommend we receive this, refer to the Town Attorney. Any reason not to do that via consent? Uh, Resolution four fifty-eight is public improvement permit, thirty-one fifty-one for storm system Romney Road realignment. Twenty twenty-three dot zero one one A, S P one one nine nine seven dash zero five underscore A S. I would, uh, recommend we approve that via consent. Any reason not to? Resolution four fifty-nine is a public improvement permit, thirty-one fifty-two for paving and curving. Resolution 459 is a public improvement permit, 3152 for paving and curbing Romney Road realignment, 2023.011A slash SP 1997-05 underscore AS. Any reason not to approve that via consent? Resolution 460 is a public improvement permit, 3153, street lighting Romney Road realignment, 2023.011A SP 1997-05 underscore AS. Any reason not to approve that via consent?
I have one suspension item. To appoint the interim town comptroller. And we'd like to thank Daryl for his many years of service, and he's not sitting in the room.
Once again, our moratorium on retardment failed us. I'm going to also join in thanking Daryl Bramer for his service. He's been wonderful to work with over the past few years as a comptroller, before that as deputy. He'll be missed. We are excited to have Jennifer Adams joining us as the interim comptroller. She's the current deputy, and I think she's going to do a wonderful job. The, we do have executive session to adjourn to. The first item is potential litigation. That's then the, that, then a potential land acquisition, which is really two parts. It's just an update on some Mere Woods property and, and a discussion about an ongoing unique opportunity. And then we have a police item that I want to discuss also. Bob, if you could, it's related to an individual. You could please stay for that. So it'll be a personnel item, sorry, not police. Then with that said, I'm going to motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?